Good afternoon and welcome. This is the time and place for the April 5, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian, Landrigan, Lee.
Here.
Shabazian here, and Chairperson Manukian.
Present. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, March 29, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's move on to the approval of minutes. Are there any changes? Otherwise, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Yes, I was not present. I think there was a mistake in typing. And I think he was here.
Oh, was I here?
We just didn't want to exclude you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, very good. Moving on to oral communications, limited to items not on the agenda. I have not received any page sheets, so we will move on to zoning appeals. We have none. Planning Commission items, old business, we have none. New business. Item number one, 344 Milford Street, subdivision of land, tentative tract number 74146. Applicant is Haik Martirosian. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Chairman Manukian, Planning Commissioners, the item before you is a request to subdivide a new six-unit multifamily residential project on a 7,875-square-foot lot located in the R1 high-density multifamily residential, I'm sorry, not R1, but R1250 high-density residential zone. The project itself is currently under construction. It was approved by the Design Review Board back on February 27, 2014. The original project was categorically exempt from CEQA as a Section 15303, Class 3, new construction, and it being a new project, six units or less. The tentative tract map application is now categorically exempt from CEQA per Section 15301, Class 14, and this would be just for the subdivision of an existing building. The lot itself, it's standard, flat, lot less than 90 feet in width. Currently, the project meets all zoning requirements. This would include height, lot coverage, the density, which in this case is six units. It also complies with our parking standards. And the staff report went into great detail regarding compliance with the general plan, both with the land use element being high-density residential, the traffic circulation, Salem being a local collector's street. The project site is not slated as an additional, as open space in terms of the recreation element, and was also consistent with the historic preservation element, the seismic safety and safety elements, and no specific plans are applicable to the project site. Based on the findings set forth in your staff report and the details submitted in the proposed motion, staff recommends approval of the tentative tract number 74146 with 29 conditions. That concludes staff's brief presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Just for the record, each Commissioner should have received the motion separately today at the dais. Beyond that, are there any questions of the staff?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. In your development standards, I believe it's page 2 of your report.
You have to press.
Oh.
Really?
Well, no doubt. Is it new? Has it been fixed?
Yeah, you have to press when you speak.
Okay. So page 2 of your report.
Yes.
I believe it will be the fourth item, building height.
Yes, there was a typo, and the project itself is two stories only with a maximum building height of 27 feet 10 inches. So apologies for that typo under proposed development features.
So it is not three-story?
No.
Thirty-nine feet, just for the record.
For the record, it is two stories, approximately 28 feet in height.
And then the next item down, unit types and sizes. Does the math match 800-foot minimum per two-bedroom unit, and then these are all 1165?
Yes, as shown in the table, the minimum standard for two-bedroom units is 800 square feet, and all of the units in this particular project are two-bedroom, and they range from 1,165 to 1,171 square feet.
So and one more, and that has to do with the landscaping. You have 1969, that is required 25 percent minimum, and then you're showing 25 percent 1986. This is also a typo, I assume?
No, actually, when you divide 1,986 by the lot size, it was rounded down to 25 percent as opposed to rounding it up to 26 percent, so.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Without any other questions, I have the applicant's engineer, Haik Martirosian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Haik Martirosian. My address is 1545 North Will Dugle Road. I'm tract engineer, and I'm representing the property owner for this project. This is six-units new condominium, which is under construction. Excuse me. We pulled our building permit back in September of this year, and we started construction right away, but due to the rainy season that we had, it took us a little bit longer than we were anticipating. Right now, we are in subterranean portion, so it will take us maybe another, by the end of the year or early next year, we will finish the project, and it will be ready for occupancy. The project is six units with 12 parking spaces for each, for the occupants and two extra for the guests, and it's going through the subterranean. And the unit sizes are almost 1,200 square feet for each two-bedrooms. They are tan house style and two-floor over the subterranean parking. I read the conditions. They are standard type for the condo project, and we are in compliance with most of the conditions, and we will comply with them. If you have any question, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are entering the deliberation phase. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Upon consideration of tentative tract number 74146, is that correct? Am I on the right one?
74146, correct.
And after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 474146 is hereby approved subject to the compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16.16 and 16.24 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 29 additional conditions listed below.
Wait, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Manukian.
Aye. Very good. Moving on to item number two, zoning map amendment. Proposed negative declaration for PZC 1608165, zone change case number PZC 1608165. Do I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Manukian. I'm sorry, not Manukian. The proposed zone map amendment request is to change the residential zoning on the southern portion of the site from R2250 zone to C31 zone, and a portion of the C31 zone to C31 PPD zone, which is the Precise Plan of Design overlay zone. The project includes the development of a three-level parking structure on the portion of the site for use by the existing banquet facility, commercial, and office uses on Colorado If you recall, a precise plan of design, the PPD zone, allows flexibility in zoning regulations while maintaining compliance with the general plan, where development proposals take advantage of site characteristics, site location, and access points, historical development plans, patterns, land assembly, or simple economics of scale to achieve superior design or function. Six findings need to be made in order for a PPD overlay zone to be placed on a site, and those can be found in your staff report. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Colorado Street and Adams Street. It currently consists of three adjoining lots with a total of 34,177 square feet. It is improved, as noted, with a two-story banquet hall and a one-story retail building which front Colorado Boulevard. The adjoining lot to the south contains a two-story multifamily residential building that is set back from the site's property line to allow, which separates, is separating from the site with a driveway and uncovered surface parking. An existing 31-space surface parking lot is currently located along Adams Street and provides parking for the businesses. The applicant is required to provide 100 off-site parking spaces for the banquet facility through leases or agreements per Condition 37 of a use variance, a conditional use permit for alcoholic beverages, and another conditional use permit for the banquet hall. Currently, the property owner leases parking spaces across the street at the World Gym for this additional parking, and however, the World Gym is set to be demolished for a new hotel. So the applicant is requesting to build a parking structure in place of the existing surface parking lot. Staff believes that the proposed zone change is keeping with the city policies, and all findings can be made to place the PPD overlay on the portion of the subject site. Those findings can be found in your staff report as well. The Design Review Board did review the project and recommended approval with conditions, which are also in your staff report. An environmental review was prepared, and a negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project. A lot, in addition, a lot-line adjustment application was submitted for this project, however, that is being placed on hold pending approval of these cases. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair. Of course.
Ms. Duarte, you mentioned that they're leasing 100 parking spaces from Gold Gym.
Correct.
And what I'm reading from this report is that the parking structure of their building is 100-space parking.
Yes.
And I noticed that there is other buildings adjacent and back of this banquet hall. So if they were leasing 100 spaces, and this parking structure replaces the 100 spaces, what about the requirements of the other, you know, retail spaces or commercial spaces? So is this 100 total requirement for this use for the entire building?
It's for the entire space, for the entire site, including the commercial uses, which generally would be used, it's proposed to be used for the commercial uses along the first floor of the structure, and the remainder would be for valet parking, as I understand the applicant's request. They also use, they also use an additional site that's located adjacent to the property for surface parking. But yes, it would replace that condition of 100 parking, and we would consider that just to replace that existing parking.
Because the way I read this report, you have existing surface parking, 34 spaces, and then they were leasing 100 across the street.
Correct.
Bring it up to 134. Now you're proposing a structure over the existing parking lot, removing that 34, but now a structure has 100 parking spaces, correct?
Correct, 99.
Yeah, so.
And with the valet parking.
So for some reason, I am looking at this report, and you know, where did the 34 parking spaces go?
The other, they also have access to an adjacent, like 34 spaces next door.
Okay, so, oh, they have that also?
They have, yes.
Oh, okay.
They own the adjacent property next door, which is also, it's shown on the site plans up there.
Right here. It's to the west side.
Oh, this side, this side right here. Oh, okay. Thank you.
May I follow up on that?
Yes, please.
So that is their property?
Yes, it is.
And the lot-line adjustment is in process, too?
It is, it was submitted, but.
Pending, you said these cases, what are these cases?
This, the cases before you today, the zone change and the design review case, well, the zone change, sorry, the zone change and the parking overlay together. This would need to be approved before we could process the lot-line adjustment.
We don't approve lot-line adjustments when you have split zoning. So this would provide consistent zoning over the area where they would be doing a lot-line adjustment, so that's the reason why we had lot-line adjustment filed concurrently with this, so we know what the lot-line adjustment would be. That's how we determined where exactly we wanted that zoning to have the PPD overlay.
And that's, that's pretty much where the parking structure is, correct?
Correct.
Can I add to that? So on this map, right here, up there, the darker line that is shown, that's not an existing parcel.
Those are existing three lots.
So is that a parcel? That doesn't have any way to actually access? Let me point it on here. That.
One, two, and three.
Okay.
And the part, the current existing lot goes over.
Okay. I think, I think looking at this, I answered my question, because it looked like this was a separate parcel.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
One more question. I want to reference this email from Mr.
No, thank you.
Kraus regarding this 90-day of a filing. I think there's more question for our City Attorney's Office, so, you know, can you clarify that, please? Or you haven't gotten the email?
We have. Yeah, for the record, we did receive a comment from, from a resident regarding this project.
Thank you. Members of the Planning Commission, if I could address this email from Mr. Kraus. I believe we have previously addressed this issue. It's come up in other public hearings where the Precise Plan of Design overlay zone has been involved. The 90-day provision in the Charter references a petition filed before the council. This is a little bit different in that it's an application for a zone change. So there's that ground to distinguish the Charter provision. And in addition, as we previously, as I've previously mentioned, the 90-day limit that's in the Charter now, it conflicts with state law, limitations for environmental review that needs to be done, and that often takes much longer than 90 days to complete. As far as the authority for PPD zone, that's been established in California case law, and Mr. Garcia has already opined on this, notably when we were amending the Precise Plan of Design ordinance, and it came up before council. This was extensively vetted and discussed, and the council decided to adopt the ordinance, amended PPD ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
So my understanding is the only thing that we are considering here is the zone change. We're not considering the lot-line adjustment?
Correct.
And the PPD has nothing to do with this decision?
Yes, you would be approving the Precise Plan of Design overlay zone, recommend, sorry, recommending.
We would recommend it to the council. So that is, those are the two actions that we're looking at today.
No.
Correct.
To clarify, our package includes a motion which has four items on it: adopt the negative declaration, approve the proposed zone change, approve the proposed Precise Plan of Design, overlay zone, and approve the proposed parking structure as recommended with conditions by the Design Review Board. We will be recommending to the City Council to approve of these four items.
Or are we only recommending the precise plan, and we approve the other three? That's within our purview, or is all of this to go to the council?
All of it. All of it will go to council. Commissioner Landrigan, you are making a recommendation to the council for all four items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm just, okay. All right, with that, I will like to call Mr. Garo Nazarian, who's the applicant, to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Garo Nazarian with Domus Design, 109 East Harvard, Unit 306. This project is proposed, the existing site, it's a kind of mixed zone, and right now, a commercial building, the banquet hall building, it's sitting on a C3 and R2250 zone, which is not complying with the code. It's an old building with the old zone. With this application, we are trying to clean up all this messy situation, and as on the presentation mentioned, this site, it's leasing not 100 parking spaces from Virgin, only 67 parking spaces. So because the Virgin site will be demolished, you know, I think soon for a new construction, and we know that the parking, it's essentially a very important issue for the businesses on this site, we started this process to get approval to build the parking structure for the businesses on the project. And actually, I want to add here, with this process, it's a big improvement, and it's a good for the neighborhood, too, because on this plan, I'm showing right now, the site, it's here, the cars arrive on the south side of the Colorado, the valet guys, they pick up the cars, they have to go on the intersection, make a U-turn, go into the Virgin parking lot, and for the drop-off, they have to exit from parking lot, and it's close to the intersection, too. And on the busy time, what they do, they just make a left turn from the parking lot to come for the drop-off, the park, for the pickup point. With this condition, you know, we kind of make it, you know, clean, this traffic and circulation is easy, and the parking structure, the surface parkings will be used by the, during the business hours, you know, the existing businesses, retail and the offices that they are on the site, the ground floor, it's sufficient for them, and the upper, you know, two levels, the second level and the rooftop, will be used by this banquet hall, mostly in the evenings, and by the valet only, because, you know, on this banquet hall businesses, it's very customary that nobody parks itself. It's always valet parking. And I did read the comments. I have a few questions. One of the comments, it's to widen the driveway ramp, which, as you see on the site, the site, it's, it is what it is, you know, I can't make it larger or to get another parcel to add to the lot. And I tried to design the way to provide the maximum parking spaces for the use, and I came with the width of the driveway, less than what the, on the conditions they are asking to widen to 18 feet 6 inches. By doing that, I will lose a parking space, or I will create a parking space not in compliance with the zoning code, the regulation, the width. So one, it's that item. The other item that I saw in the comments, I didn't saw any dedication request from Public Works, but in the others, you know, few items after, I saw that the street improvement plan should be done by the owner, but I think that we don't have any street improvement plans to do that, because there is no dedication. And after that, the other comments are regular. We don't have any objection. We agree with the conditions, and we are seeking for, you know, this year recommendation to go as soon as possible to the City Council to get approval and start this construction. We don't want to be far behind. When they start the Virgin, start the construction, then I know that it will be tough for the business and tough for the neighbors, too. So we want to provide all the parking spaces that we need to, you know, accommodate, you know, all the cars that they are coming to the business, and even to ease up the life of the neighbors. And as mentioned, on the west side of the property, there is another parcel, it's owned by the same owners, that we are using for the parking, too. So the parking, it won't be an issue. And if you have any questions?
Yeah.
Why did you choose to use a precise plan of development instead of going through the regular variance, et cetera? What, what is the reasoning behind it?
And actually, this is an item that we started, you know, discussion with the planning department, and they suggested, you know, different ways. I'm right, Kathy? You know, once they suggested to go to just zone change and variances, then it came, the last suggestion was to go to PPD. That is, actually, it was my kind of, I like the idea, but it has been decided by having communication with the planning department and to find out the best way to solve this.
I think one of the advantages of the PPD versus a zone change variance is that that use, the PPD, is not going to change on it. A variance, once it runs its course, depending on for how many years it is, it's a conditional use permit or what have you, you can't change it. So these guys want to make sure that this banquet hall, this facility, has got that parking in eternity. Well, all.
Yeah, because any changes to PPD zone has to come back to, again, yeah, to City Council.
Mr. Chair. You know, just my own curiosity, what is the timeframe that you're looking at? Because I know Gold Gym, that you have a hotel going up there, so what is the timeframe that you have, you know, for you to, to get this approved and get it built?
When the timeframe, you know, I, I would like, you know, to check with the owners, if I'm not, maybe three, four months? Yeah, as soon as possible, we want to start. But the maximum timeframe, I think it will be four months, and because of that, already I talked with Pacific, Clerk Pacific, which is a spank-rite, you know, prefab planks, not to have the traditional, you know, construction, which it takes longer time. Already, we submitted our plans to this Clerk Pacific to prepare our, you know, shop drawings, to design the planks and the columns, because we want to go very fast to finish this construction.
Wow.
We are trying to minimize our timing.
So you're going to try to finish this in six months?
I hope so. Yeah, we want to do it, yeah. Three months.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I just want to, could you clarify, you, and maybe I heard this wrong, the landscaping, you're saying the, doing the landscaping that's recommended reduces your parking spaces?
No. No, landscaping, because the entire site, it's a. No, landscaping, because the entire site, it's a covered parking spaces, and the landscaping on the covered, you know, indoor, it doesn't work. And after having discussion with the planner, you know, we added some planter boxes on the top, you know, to give some green wall in the facade.
So that's where, I saw it on your drawing.
Yeah.
But there's no landscaping that's along Adams or Colorado?
No.
Non-existing?
Existing, there is about 30 inch, 30 inch, 30 inch or three feet wide planters, you know, planter box in the front.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we close the public comment, and we go into deliberation. Any comments from the members? No?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, tariffed, no.
All right. So I was actually trying to make sure I understood the site correctly. I initially thought that this was four parcels, and then you had that parcel that was locked in. So it's three parcels, so actually, the property lies in a parcel that's half one zone and the other half commercial and half residential. So I think it makes sense to bring it up to code, or bring all, the entire parcel into one zone, which is going to serve the business. And I see that the design review board already has recommendations, and I think we should go with their recommendations. I don't know if you guys have anything else to add?
I think it's a good project.
Okay. I think we need it.
So do I need a motion? Do I have a motion?
I can read that, yes. So I am going to move this motion, proposed zone change and placement of the precise plan of design overlay zone, zone code amendment, zoning amendment case number PZC 1608165 on the property at 1012 1024 East Colorado Street and 311 South Adams Street, APN numbers 567023, 00456 and 7, and consideration of the development proposed within the project title. The planning commission hereby recommends the city council the following four items. Do I have anyone seconding this motion?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Landrigan. Lee.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
Chairperson Manukian.
Aye.
Would you like me to say aye?
Aye.
Apparently everybody...
I never said anything.
I know, I was just going to say your name again.
It's okay, it's all right. All right.
And I, and I, and I say no.
Stephanit's aye.
No.
All right. With that, we move on to community development department updates. Do we have any?
Thank you.
Do we have any?
We have no updates.
Very good. Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
No comments.
Do they have any comments? Kind of surprised. Very good. With that, we can adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.